I apologize if my voice is too shiny for you. The audience. Good lord.
Yeah, I'm sitting next to Matt.
You ever got some sunscreen?
No, we need those powder.
Everybody out there? That's right.
This isn't even through the house left?
Woo.
I don't know.
It's much easier why there's a power drain in the range over right now.
Yeah.
Hey, this is still peak time, too, man. They're great. My tax dollars here.
I am calling to order this regular meeting of the Cordova Recreation and Park District at 6:30 PM. So we'll start with the call to order.
Thank you. We're gonna observe a moment of silence. I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Good evening. I'm just gonna read off who we're honoring this evening. So I'll ask that you listen to our moment of silence, silence person, and then we'll stand for the moment of silence, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance to remain standing. So tonight, we're honoring Ray Gallagher, who worked at our Cordova Golf Course for over 25 years, retiring at the young age of 92 years old. He was known for many things by employees, golfers, and great friends that he made along the way. He was known for his love of golf and sharing that with others, warm and kind demeanor to everyone he met. He was always positive and happy to see you and always remembered your name. The knowledge and skills he had is often performing many tasks at the course, including bookkeeping, scheduling customer service, all doing it well. Since we've learned that Ray had also other accomplishments in his extraordinary life, he was a veteran of World War II stationed at Pearl Harbor. He was a founding member of the Sacramento Water Ski Club and water skied into his retirement. He played at a, played and was a member of the Golden Senior Softball Club and won two World Series, and he was a member of the Elks American Legion poet and played the ukulele, even winning over his father-in-law with a song. Because of Ray's positive impact on all of us and the ones that he knew, we'd like to honor him with this moment of silence. So if you'd please stand, we'll take a moment of silence and then we'll just remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll ask Danielle Jones to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And now if we could have roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Here.
Director Danzel.
Here.
Secretary Yearwood.
Here.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Here.
And Chair Lineback.
Here. And we move on to item B, comments by the public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff, and I do not have any requests.
Okay, thank you. So we will move on to the consent calendar, item C.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening, we have seven items for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on any of the consent agenda items?
There was one I wanted to talk about.
Mm-hmm. There was one about Fetterspill Park. What was, what drill was that?
Item C5?
Yeah, we just pull that. I wanna just ask a question.
You can ask the question. We don't have to, unless you wanna make a change to it.
No, I just was wondering. I, I looked at the map and I always thought it was weird that there would be one little play area way up here by the school, and all the way down the other one, there's never been proposed play area or play structure. They're gonna put two park benches there, it looks like, by the scheme. But was there ever, in the scheme of things, that have some type of a play area in that part of the park?
This item is referring to the pathway project that we have funding from the city's Measure H program. From what I understand, there was never any plan for an additional playground on the other parcel of Fetterspill Park, how it's split between the, the road there. But this is that project that we're getting, go send out for construction bids for the pathway that we received some funding for, which also includes some benches and I believe a water fountain as well.
Water fountain, right. I saw that.
Yeah.
I just, I just never really could figure out. You got, if people are picnicking on that one part, they have, the kids have to cross the street to get to the play area and then cross the street to go back. So I always kinda wondered why they never developed that.
Well, one part, side of the park was done first, and then the other part was deeded over.
Oh, literally?
Yeah, that's why. The other side's always just been a grassy area. Yeah.
Where, oh, where, so that where the pool was and the play structure.
Yeah.
That was the original.
That was the original park, and then Fetterspill deeded the other portion, I think, over or something like that at a later date.
Good, alright. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the consent calendar?
Chair Lineback, I will move that we approve consent calendars C1 through C7.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes.
Second.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye. Okay, so we have no presentations or committee reports, so we will move on to item F, public hearings.
Thank you. Item F1 is to adopt Resolution 21/22-46, amending the district fee schedule for the Cordova Recreation and Park District.
Okay, we are now opening the public hearing at 6:37 PM.
And I'll turn it over to CFO Matt Gadel.
Alright, thank you, Clerk Jones, Chair Lineback, and board members. Alright, so the item this evening is in regards to a notice about fee changes. And so I'll discuss the timeline, the categories of modifications, and specific fee changes. I'll highlight those. Alright, so this process has been thought out and vetted. When we reviewed the budget proposals in March through April, it was evident that costs increased enough to warrant some fee adjustments. And so staff worked on benchmarking and presented to the Budget and Finance Committee on May 11th those proposed fee adjustments. And then on June 3rd and June 10th, Clerk Jones published the proposed fee notice change with the grapevine, which I think that's why the icon picked the, the wine glass there, but, and all the facilities posted on, since June 3rd as well. And then here we are today, June 15th, for the board meeting and public hearing. And after tonight, what's gonna happen is the, if any board adopts the fees, will take effect and be implemented on September 1st with updates to the district website, facility signage, rec guide, marketing, and registration. So we have five types of fee modifications. Listed are the current fees, and so these are existing without any changes, and they were adopted recently on October 20th, 2021. We also have the same minimum, but an increase to the range on the maximum at 15%. This is kind of the overall philosophy when it comes to the cost. It provides more flexibility for staff to adjust based on inflation and anything that we can see in the near future. Gives us room. Another category is other adjustments. And so that's for special circumstances that were required a different amount than just the 15% philosophy. Of course, we have new fees, and this created efficiencies in our programming, or things have changed where we added. And so we benchmarked other agencies what those were and added those as well. And then finally, removal. So there's some fees that are outdated or no longer used or relevant. So I'm not gonna talk about the current or the standard. There's 47 line items of those in, in the packet there. But I will go into detail about the, the new fees and the specific fees or the other fees. So we added four fees, and the first one is to offer lap swim 10 visit punch cards. And it's important to note the lap swim. We'll talk about the next category. But anyway, we're gonna offer lap swim 10 visit punch cards. That's new. We're also gonna add the ability to rent a lane for an hour, or how many lanes you want, at that rate. And again, these are benchmarked against other agencies. Next up is a pool field trip. So this is for a school or organization that wishes to come at a discount to participate in a field trip. And then finally, a cell tower, communications tower application fee. We are receiving multiple requests to investigate potential cell sites on our facilities and parks. And after researching what other agencies do, they do go through the process, but they also charge a fee for their time and their costs involved. And so we feel we should do that as well. And so looking around, $7,500 was kind of the standard. And I thought, well, if we ever incur more costs, we can go to whatever they actually are and do the contract that way. And so we like to implement a fee for us to go through the exercise of looking for new cell tower sites. Again, all these fees were benchmarked against agencies, park, recreation, and Sacramento County. Alright, next category is removed fees. And the first one that we no longer need is the 10 visit recreation open swim. So this is the lap swim that we added. This is now the rec swim punch cards that we had. What we're offering now is a season pass. So that's what people either come for the day or then come for the season. And so we're not gonna offer these 10 visit punch cards anymore. Next is the Aqua Challenge, obstacle course that we had a Lincoln Village community pool. I guess it, it can't inflate anymore, and so it's, 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 it's dead. And so the, the recommendation from recreation is to not get a new one at this time, and so the fee is irrelevant. And then district-wide for insurance costs. This is something that we offered, but now the insurance company directly is in charge of that process. And so the, the renters go through them to acquire the insurance and then come to us. So we don't have to worry about passing along the fee, and it's out of our hands. So it's a task that's gone. So those are the three fees that we're asking to remove off the schedule. Alright, now for others. So this is outside of that 15% philosophy of adjustment. First one is the splash park at White Rock. With all the cost increase to, to labor, to lifeguards, and, and operating the facility, it, it made sense to increase that rate to a rental fee of 300 to 350. So that's above that 15%, why we're highlighting it. Next, the golf course purchased new walking push pole carts. And looking around what others charge, it made sense to go ahead and raise that a dollar to $3 on, on that as well. At the New Orchard Senior Activity Center, our annual membership is requested to go from $5 a year to six to 10 potentially, for, for the year, again. So that's what that amount is for, and that's based on what other agencies are doing. And then finally, activities, if you don't have a membership, is gonna go from $1 to either $2 to $5, depending on the, what the activity is. Oh, one more. And so another special events, Senior Center wants to add potential classier or, or a more, I don't know, a higher-end event, I guess, to, to see. So these aren't for existing events to go up from 55 to 100, but to add new potential black tie dinners or something like that. So trying to keep it classy. So she wants a higher range. So again, you can find the full schedule in the handout. There's a lot of line items there. Those are the ones that just were either removed, new, or had a higher range of that 15%. And that is the end of my presentation.
Can I add just one thing? The preliminary budget that was presented in the workshop, these fees tie to the revenue that we projected for that preliminary budget to balance the budget. And just, I just wanted to make sure you all are aware how it ties to that preliminary budget proposal from earlier, and then also what will be coming forward later in the board meeting.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I invite any member of the public who wishes to comment. And seeing none, I will close the pub, public hearing at 6:45 PM. And now it is time for our director, directors. If they have any questions or discussion items, would you like to start, Director Sloan?
Sure. For a person to get into the swim, the pool. What's the fee for, if I go, if I went there, my son went there?
It's $5 per person.
Five, yeah.
$5. So the, the incentive was to buy a punch card at one point, right? Punch cards could be used if, without having cash, you can bring in three kids and yourself and punch four times, right?
So the, the $10 punch pass was for 10 visits to the pool, and there was a discounted rate for the 10.
Right.
So it was, it was a little bit less.
Right, but it wasn't.
But we're moving to.
I didn't get rid of it, but it wasn't for just for one person. It could be used for three people or two people at a time.
Sure.
Now you're saying, we're not, we don't have that anymore. You have to buy a pass. So now you're asking parents to buy a seasonal pass for $40 for each of their children, rather than buy a discounted punch card, which they could use whenever they needed to use it. And so I, I, I think it's kind of asking a little, little bit much for, for the community who, these people who have lots of kids. That's my thought. I, I don't know if I, if people can afford it, you know, to buy seasonal passes. And is that requiring a seasonal pass, you have to be accompanied by an adult at a certain age, right, I imagine? What is it, 12, 14, 18? What age can you go alone?
Go alone, I'm not sure about that.
Well, let's, what is that? Someone's gotta know here. 18?
There are, you, you can go to the pool. There are lifeguards. There are, you know, people going in with their parents. Some are older kids that go. There's no restrictions on whether someone comes in or doesn't come in based on their age. So I guess that answers your question.
A family now, I could have bought a punch card for $40 or whatever it was for my two kids who were 14 and 16, and they could go over there and they could punch it. Now you don't have that ability. They could have gone five times to the pool, which might have been all they needed for the summer. Now you're requiring them to pay $80 for that same family. That's my point. So, I mean, that's why I look at that.
There's, there's still a daily fee that's $5.
You can spend $5, but the whole incentive to buy the 10 punch thing was the, you get in for $4. So you save 10 bucks.
And, and I, I think, did you say that multiple people can use the card? Cause I think that's.
Punch card. Oh, you're, are you telling me the punch cards, yeah?
Yeah, it should be one person.
No, no, it's, it's not. It's anybody. It's a punch card.
So like five people can come in at one time on the one card?
I found one on the ground. I could use it.
Hmm.
It's like money.
They don't often get it for the kids because they lose them. So just, you know, I'm not saying that's, that's the thing for the pool, but it's usually more convenient from my experience to parents to, to have those pa, you know, an actual membership or a summer pass, cause those, those cards get lost.
So the membership, is it, you go in and they just give them your name?
Yeah, or they scan. They have the, they have the key tags that they're using now for the summer pool pass. And so you just have your own key tag and you scan it, but if you don't have the key tag, you can always punch in the number.
I just, I'm just not, I'm not thrilled by it. I liked, I liked the punch card. So it's more user-friendly.
We know that those pool summer passes have been selling like crazy. Like we've ordered key tags and we've ordered more. Just, who would have thought? I know those are really, really popular.
I think, you know, during our budget meeting that we had, one of the, the ideas behind not offering the 10 punch pass is to encourage the sale of the season's passes. So there, this is a new program, and they're trying to encourage people to use it. You can still get in for very low cost your daily swim fee. You know, when you have the 10 visit punch pass, you're saving a dollar per person. You're not saving, you know, like the entire entry. So now you're not saving the dollar per person, but.
The, but the pass, the, and now the seasonal pass is signed to one user.
Yeah, except you, you know, for instance, I bought a family pass for my daughter's family. So all four members of the family get in under the family pass.
How much is a family?
So the, the individual pass, one, age one and above, is $65 for a swim season pass. Family is 180.
For four, up to four.
For four, up to four people. And then additional family members are $45.
And also, it's, it's unlimited entry into both Lincoln Village and Hagan for the season for that cost. So it's a good deal, and if you're not someone who's gonna go to the pool all the time, the daily fee is still $5. It's still reasonable to, I mean, to, to my point of view.
Well, you know, I, I, I could go along with it, but I would, I would definitely like to hear the feedback.
I think it's also easier for staff and paperwork and tracking and managing. Instead of doing punch cards, it's easier to manage the season pass, too. So I know on the staff side, it's easier going the season pass route.
Yeah, I think, too, you, you make a point. You'd like to hear the feedback, and I think that's, you know, this is the very first year. And so this was, you know, and, an attempt to try and get this new way of paying for swim for the season going. And if you get a lot of negative feedback, I'm pretty sure you're gonna listen to that and, you know, make adjustments. I, I agree. I mean, it's a brand-new program, so there's no real way of knowing what people are gonna think about it until you do it.
Well, last year, we opened up the pool, and I know all we had was a punch card. We didn't offer the season pass, correct?
Yeah, they had very minimal sales, and I think that was why the proposal moved in this direction.
They would just, they just would, people would just pay the $5.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. So I, I mean, if it was a successful program, I don't think it would be a proposal that we would look to get rid of. So I do believe it was based off of, you know, that first year of opening and how many we sold in order to strategically try to get more people to go to the pool. I mean, you wanna have an open-ended way without having to hold on to a punch pass or, or something like that. So from my understanding, this proposal became something of more of a benefit to the customers by having it more seamlessly and more taking advantage of our, both of the pools whenever they chose to, instead of, you know, designated times and people to go to them and, and drain that. But from my understanding, the 10 punch cards were not sold to the point where that was a strategic way of enticing people to come to the pool.
Right, well, it was, we were just coming out of COVID, too, though. Is a visit, could someone, I have a pass now. I'm a member. I walk through the gate. I can stay all day? Or do I get, is there, is there session times?
There are session times. There's recreation swim, where you have different scheduled hours. I believe it's Monday through Thursday, 1 to 4. I, I'm gonna have a great memory here. Fridays are 2 until 7, and weekends are 2 to 7. Is that correct? Something along those lines. But those are the opportunities for the swim pass, or swim season pass, for you to join that recreation swim program. The other times that are used are restricted for swim lessons. And so that program ends, and usually we have the swim lessons in the morning. And then during the weekday, Monday through Thursday, they transition to swim lessons in the evening. So that's kind of the schedule. So there's a good chunk of time for you to have open swim or, you know, in essence, spend the day at the pool for a significant amount of time at this point.
You know, going through the gate is, everybody has to pay, even if it was a grandma who's bringing the grandkids?
Correct.
Um, what else was I gonna ask? I forget. Okay, so we can move on.
Okay. Any other director? Director Danzel?
Most everything here looks good. I was just, I'll be honest. And I know that we've benchmarked other districts, and I had to look it up. But when I first saw the number of $40 for an hour of lap swim, I was like, what the heck? You know, now I know why people, I'm gonna say this, and I shouldn't, but now I know why people go to the river to go swim, because it's $40, but I don't have a lifeguard at the river. So I'm glad I have a lifeguard. But, um, but yeah, that, that kinda, kinda shocked me, looking at, at $40 when a punch, when a punch card is $44 for 10 times. So that, that math just didn't look at me.
Well, I can explain that. So the recreation swim and the lap swim are two different programs. And so the lap swim is really for those competitive swimmers or those groups that don't wanna rent the entire pool. So they would choose to maybe rent a lane or two lanes to meet their need to train their swimmers, maybe for a triathlon, or, you know, maybe a swim meet or some coaching, independent coaching. So it's an option that we've seen as an option throughout the industry that it entices folks to afford, you know, it's usually a group approaching us to rent a lane to train their employees. And it's actually a pretty good deal, which is kind of industry standards for all pools. Is, we don't wanna offer them only the entire pool or nothing. So this is a way for them to also be able to participate at our pool.
Now, are those, those single lanes that we're offering in those strange times, are those the lanes? We started with those lanes on the zero, zero entry pool. Are those the lanes we start with? Are we cutting off big parts of the pool? Cause I know we have lanes over both pools, but.
You know, I don't know exactly, to be honest with you. I do know that the intentions were for groups to only need to get what they are needing. And so instead of renting the entire pool or even the majority or half the pool, it gives them an option to have a smaller group, you know, share lanes and stuff like that and save some money.
Okay. Yeah, other than that, looking at what we're removing and what's staying the same and things like that, I really didn't see any major qualms. I mean, we, unfortunately, things are what they are in today's society. I mean, inflation goes up, minimum wage goes up again in January. So, yeah, I mean.
Nice, everything goes up.
We've gotta be able to, can keep our business running. I mean, I think every one of us here would love to say, hey, let's go do, because that's what we enjoy. But at the same time, this is a business, and we've gotta ke, keep the business running. I mean, we already run our business at a skeleton crew as is. So it's not like we've got 5, 500 lifeguards and, you know, this, that, and the other. We're already running on the skeleton crew. So I don't see that this is a major inconvenience for too many folks. And if there is, then give me a call. We'll talk about it and see, see what we can do.
And, and just so you're aware, you know, this isn't set in stone. We, we do bring back the fee schedule annually. We're intending to do so. And so like Terry was mentioning, we, we are gonna attempt to propose that this is the way we would like to do it until the next time we evaluate and we can come back. And along the way also, if we see that it's not working, that's why we have the luxury of having that range to adjust as necessary if it doesn't turn out to be as beneficial as we were hoping.
Thank you, sir.
On the same, I, I know, Director Sloan, you wanna make another comment, but I wanna continue with the lap swim thing for, if I may. Because there is a lap swim 10 visit punch card for $44, and then there's the lane rental fee for an hour. That's $40. hour. That's forty dollars. So is that, is the lap swim like a separate, um, like, I know at Fulton Hall Camino, they used to have lap swim from noon to one.
Correct.
Every day.
Correct. It's a pro, it's a program separate from the recreation swim program, which is more open. It's really specifically for, well, targeting adults really, uh, so that they can either, um, you know, do a ton punch to encourage the lap swim program to build. Uh, we're attempting to do it that way. And then also the ability to rent a lane, two different kind of, uh, things. But most likely that program, lap swim program will be within that range. You're not going to offer most likely a, a lane during our recreation swim hours. Uh, so we're trying to craft a new, uh, lap swim program, I should say, in a frame of lap swim. And those are the two options for folks to join that program.
Because it just seems kind of a disconnect that you can, you can go swim, lap swim for an hour with, for four dollars and forty cents because it's a ten visit punch pad. Or you can rent the lane for an hour for forty dollars. I don't quite get that.
So one is individual and one is potentially catering to groups that need maybe five swimmers, but one lane or two lanes. And so typically the people that are asking for lanes, uh, will be groups that have like maybe five of their swimmers who need additional training.
I see.
The other one is for an individual adult, like I want to do lap swimming in the morning, and I will buy a punch pad to see if I like it. Uh, and then maybe they'll continue to go and maybe get a, eventually we might work ourselves into a lap swim, um, you know, membership or, or something like that, like we're currently doing with the rec swim proposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, Director Sloan, you.
I have some more questions on the, the punch card that we've sold last year. They expire at the end of the year or they can be used the following year?
They expire.
They expire?
They're per season.
Oh, per season? So people who've already purchased these punch cards for ten visits?
They'll be honored, I think.
This year?
This year, yeah. And then these fees will start September first. Any, any of these changes will be September first for, for next season.
When, when the pool closes?
Yeah, after the pool closes.
So you're gonna, okay.
So this is next summer.
Okay. Um, Director, or sorry, Secretary Yearwood, you have anything?
Um, no, not really. I, I was, had the same question about the forty-four for ten visits and the forty for an hour. I was wondering if the visit one, do they get the lane dedicated to them if they do that punch card for ten?
No.
So there's, there could be somebody else that are doing the same thing.
Correct.
That makes sense.
Yep.
And I was looking for something on here when Director Sloan asked about the, so we're still sending, selling the punch cards and the season passes this year, right?
Correct.
And the season passes are just selling like hotcakes and the punch cards are just kind of sitting there collecting dust or something?
From my understanding, the, uh, punch card proposal isn't as successful as a season pass. And kind of industry standards with established pool programs, uh, they're more at a season pass versus this ten punch pass or fifteen punch pass. Uh, so, but currently, like you mentioned, we are doing them. Uh, so if we, and maybe get an influx of punch passes, um, which we don't suspect we will, um, we could always revisit that next year when we bring the fee schedule forward.
Season passes are definitely selling well.
Yeah, they are, absolutely.
The other ones are kind of like, they're not, some here maybe.
Correct. And in the first year also, they were a very low sale. Uh, so that's why the proposal and the idea came up, just to eliminate them and go with the season pass instead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really, uh, other than that, that, I like, looks pretty comprehensive and very pretty on this piece of paper. All right.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Yes, I wanted to check, my only question was, I do know we've put announcements and they've, they've gone ahead and they've put signage in the pool area, I'm sure. Um, and so the question is, have we gotten any feedback, uh, about these, uh, schedule changes? I mean, you know, because normally that's what'll happen. We'll get the feedback, we'll get emails, whatever. And the question is, have we gotten any? No?
I can answer.
I haven't. I don't know.
Yeah.
Customer service hasn't.
We did post them, uh, with the public hearing notice as well as fees will be discussed at this meeting at all of our facilities. Uh, we have not, um, maybe Chase, no. Um, we haven't heard anyone having any, you know, concerns or questions or, uh, conflict with what the proposals were. And they were visible and they were, uh, noticeable. They just maybe understand kind of where, just like everyone else. I mean, the gas prices, everything is going up, that of course, most likely everyone is going to be looking to increase their fees and proposals as well, so.
Yeah, that's understandable. I think probably there's a little bit of this, uh, expect, uh, expectation that the prices will go up. But it's, I mean, when you look at it and you see in the long run, it's not gouging, all right? Then it's understandable. And I, I really am, especially for our community pool, I'm really, you know, watching and being conscious. So I know staff has gone out to see what's industry standard and how we compare. But I think it's real important because we do need to maintain, have enough to maintain and to provide and keep our, um, the pool, the community pool, Lincoln Village pool, keep them very well, um, funded as best we can, not making profits, but basically cost recoveries here. That's, I'm sure that, uh, do we, one other question is, do we have, I know we have like scholarships for like, uh, for like students that, or people that want to do summer camp, but they need some help or whatever. Do we have that also for the community pool use?
We do.
Good.
So that's running through our foundation.
Wonderful.
Uh, and they have, uh, applications that they fill out in order for assistance. And that applies to really every program, uh, from preschool all the way through seniors.
Great.
Yeah.
Wonderful. That's it. That's great. Thank you.
Okay, for me, um, you know, I was, you know, with Inez introduced to this at our Budget and Finance Committee meeting. So I don't really have too many questions about the fee schedule at all. And I understand the need to raise the fees. I did have a discussion, um, with Patrick about if you look at the, um, resolution for this fee schedule, um, section four says any new fees, fees modified by twenty percent or more and fees proposed to be eliminated would be presented to the board for approval. Modifications to existing fees of less than twenty percent would be presented to the general manager or director of Parks and Recreation for approval. So my concern is that, um, that I discussed was that we have, uh, an, a fee schedule here, which in its entirety has, nearly in its entirety has been changed with rates, uh, increased, most of them less than twenty percent, but wholesale changes of fifteen percent throughout the fee schedule. So I was concerned that, you know, sometime in the future, there might be, uh, suggestion within the staff that this entire fee schedule be changed, but below twenty percent. So the board would never see that. So I discussed with Patrick and he's already mentioned that, you know, we should still have an annual presentation of the fee schedule to the Board of Directors. And so I would like to modify the resolution, um, that's before us, uh, in section four only, to stipulate or to add to it that, you know, aside any changes to the fee schedule, the fee schedule will be presented to the Board of Directors annually.
Sure, I'm, I agree with you there. Um, going back to what Director Sloan was talking about, the hundred and eighty-five dollars you dropped, me, the math guy, right? Drop it down to forty-five dollars per person. But if you're, if kids or anything like Director or Secretary Gerwood, myself were when we were here, six days a week at the pool is nothing. It, for that forty-five dollars, that drops it down to ninety-three cents a visit.
Yeah.
I mean, so.
Right, it's really.
You know, it's not, I mean, yeah, it's a lot of money upfront. But, you know, my season passes for Disneyland were a lot, a lot upfront too. Um, and they keep going up for some reason. But that's what I'm saying. So I, I look at it ninety-three cents because I know Secretary Gerwood, you were at the pool quite a bit when you were a kid. I know I was there every possible day that I could. Got sunburned enough as a child here in our beautiful community. But yeah, so ninety-three cents, I look at it that way.
I went to Fetterspil. I'm sure you went to.
It wasn't, it was a dollar.
I, I went.
It was a dollar to get in there.
I, yeah, I remember, I do twenty-five, fifty cents back then. So we're not off too much if you buy the pass. So, you know, you're talking forty, thirty-five, forty years ago, we, we really haven't gone up. If you, if you buy that pass, you're not that far off of what you were. So that's just, you know, me as the number guy. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, I would like to know if, uh, the other directors are in agreement that we should see this fee schedule annually.
Yes, I, I, I agree with that.
Would you say see it and then have to approve it or just see it?
Well, approve it, yeah, as, as a, as a, as an item annually, you know? I mean, we have, uh, a fiscal fiduciary oversight duty here on this board. And, um, you know, it's.
Yes.
Um, and I have no objection to these changes. So I'm, you know, I don't want to imply that I'm saying this because I disagree with the fee schedule. I just think that it's something that the board should see annually and approve.
Can I ask one little quick question?
Yeah.
New fee minimum, new, new fee maximum. What does that mean?
So that, this kind of goes back to why the language and the resolution needs to be changed. That resolution came before we even had a range. We just had one fee. So now that we have a range, it makes sense that we bring it to the board if we make any changes outside that range anyway. So that's, that's good.
Range because of weekday and weekend?
But, uh, kind of, right, right. So we can charge different rates because of that, um, or make a small increase if need be, or decrease, uh, whatever's within that range.
Yeah.
So it allows a little bit of flexibility instead of being stuck with that rate for whatever reason. Coming to the board for a dollar change, it doesn't make sense.
I, I would say though, that, um, you know, as a public agency, we have to treat everybody the same. So you can't have a minimum fee for Joe.
Oh, no, 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 no.
And a maximum fee for Sally.
Not, no, not like that. No.
Wouldn't it be like if a cost is something, like at the pool, chlorine all of a sudden tripled in price or something like that? It would be.
Right, something operationally. But all would be charged the same fee. It's not different fees for different people.
Swim lane rental fee, forty dollar minimum, seventy dollar maximum. So it's going to drop up, go up thirty dollars because of chlorine being more? Or because of the weekend? I don't get it.
I mean, that, that was just an example. There, there are several, uh, reasons to be flexible in certain fees. Uh, and this just extends the ability to do so if necessary. But by bringing it back annually, it is important for us to make sure that we're updating you as to what the actual fees are and what that range that exists. And that's kind of what we've been doing for the last four years. Um, and so that is really what Matt was mentioning is what Terry was saying. There's not a necessary need for us to have a twenty percent, you know, variable there, uh, because we're in a range. We don't necessarily need that. Uh, and the board is approving the range, not a flat fee associated with what do we adjust outside of what you guys are approving at a flat rate. So.
I think golf is a good example. Like instead of having ten fees because we're going to have one at Twilight, one for eighteen holes, one for nine holes, one, you know, for juniors. It just makes sense just to have one line item range and then just know that that's what's going on within that range.
Does golf cart cost more in the weekends to rent?
I think it does, yeah. Do we have a higher golf cart rate in weekends or is it the same?
Same price.
Oh.
Good. But, okay, well, but our push cart, our push carts go up to eight dollars on the weekends? Is that what they're?
No, because it's brand new.
Push cart?
So that's in the range, just equivalent with other courses in the area.
Oh.
But I believe most of the fees are at the minimum set right now. And again, this way, we don't have to keep changing the fees every year, that one dollar, two dollars. Maybe next year or two years, we know, okay, minimum wage has gone up a dollar, we need to increase fees a dollar. Operationally, it can be done with that flexibility of that range. That's, that's the purpose for the range. I mean, one of them. Like I said, there's different variables, costs, other things, but yeah.
So next year it would just be looking at it and approving it if everything stays within.
Yeah.
Yeah, most likely after this experience, uh, we most likely will have slight changes, if any, uh, with the annual, um, you know, fee schedule presentation to the board, I would imagine. Uh, this is the most significant one we've had to do, uh, since we started this process. And it's because we needed to balance a budget to be frank and honest about it. With the increase in inflation and other costs, uh, we do need to cover our costs in order to be sustainable. So this was one of our philosophies this year in creating that preliminary budget which was proposed.
If there's no further discussion items, um, I would like to entertain a motion from someone.
Chair, since you had an adjustment to
Mm-hmm.
that one section, I would request that you make the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, all right. So I would like to move that the Board of Directors pass Resolution Number Twenty-One slash Twenty-Two dash Forty-Six regarding, um, an amendment to the district fee schedule with one change to section four, adding language that stipulates that the fee schedule will be presented to the Board of Directors annually for its approval.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Lineback?
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, we have a second public hearing, item F-two.
Thank you. Item F-two is to adopt Resolution Twenty-One slash Twenty-Two dash Forty-Seven, approving the preliminary budget for the Cordova Recreation and Park District for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and authorize the general manager to file with the county auditor controller.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Clerk Jones. I'm opening the public hearing at seven fourteen PM.
Thank you. I'll turn it back over to CFO Goodell.
All right, thank you Clerk Jones, Chair Lineback and board members. Uh, this item is for the adoption of the preliminary budget. Uh, we did earlier this evening at four o'clock have a budget workshop, which was fantastic. And, uh, so I'm just gonna pretty much summarize and walk through those points, uh, for the purpose of this public hearing. So this shows a rough timeline of what's taken place in the last six months of work that involves three different committees, some meeting twice, and a great opportunity for the public to, uh, provide input if they, if they wanted to. Growth is the theme this year and we are continuously growing, as we know. But if we take a look back ten years, we had an operating plan of nine million dollars. So just operations, not projects, just operations. Two thousand twelve. And then in two thousand seventeen, five years after that, we grew a couple million dollars to eleven million dollar operating budget. And then after that, uh, now, five years later, uh, we're at fifteen point five million dollar operations. So pretty, pretty huge jump. So now we, we fit into the large shirt and it's tough to fit in that small shirt. Like we gotta think that we're, we're large now and, uh, as we are. Because a lot has happened since then. You know, we've had a lot of annexations, we have a lot of CFDs, we've added a lot of parks to our system. Uh, property tax has gone up from three million to five million. Assessment taxes have gone up from three to seven point five million. Our reserves have grown from three hundred thousand to three million in our general fund. And so a lot has happened and, uh, who we are today is definitely, keeps on changing. So if you take that fifteen point five of operations, you tack on the capital improvement plan for next year at ten point eight, we have an overall budget of twenty-six point million dollars. That's fantastic. Fun fact, Measure J has raised over ten million since its inception in two thousand seventeen, and we've invested in eighty-five projects for those twenty-two parks. So fantastic. So we have nine budget funds as part of this budget. This is something new. And so these are the list of them. We have our typical main one, our general fund. And then we have our enterprise fund, which is the Cordova Golf Course. And then we have seven assessment funds, um, that are restricted for their areas and spent on park services. Uh, there are two funds that are not included in this budget. It's our three forty-seven D district-wide center property. Um, there's no activity going on or planned for next year, so it's not part of the budget process. And then also Glenboro East and Place. Um, we're not planning any building going on next year either. So we're not gonna, to levy those properties. As is discussed earlier about the undeveloped versus the developed, no parks there yet. So those are nine funds and what they bring in per operations and capital improvements. So breaking it down, this is our ten section. This is our labor. It's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference between the budget this year compared to, uh, what's being proposed. And so we do have four new positions being asked for. One is an associate planner to help out planning and the new growth and development. Another one for recreation, administrative assistant for helping with, uh, events and sign-ins and registration. Probably going to be housed at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center. One for parks, uh, maintenance worker one, which is going to be helped at the Mather Sports Center. And then a golf maintenance worker one, uh, a utility worker to help out with multiple tasks out at the golf course. We did have a promotion, uh, or will have a promotion not yet. We did have a promotion, or will have a promotion, not yet, from a PM one to a PM two for two personnel due to their high level of services and staff that they manage. Also being requested is a cost of living increase for three percent, which kind of matches what our typical tax increase is, and so that's what we kind of want to follow, and so that's for all full-time staff, and to offset it, we're having difficulty hiring people for part-time, and so we have about seventeen thousand hour reduction in that area, in a couple areas, and so that kind of speaks to why we're hiring that, and also adding a custodial contract, which we'll discuss here. So looking at the twenties, the services and supplies, this is the parks area, we're looking for an increase in our contract with the new area, adding parks and inflation, a little bit of that, our water system supplies, we're having to repair some sprinklers and replace them, and also we're going to do a drinking fountain at Sunridge Park, so that entails that cost, our water is going up about five percent for our utility costs, so that's pretty good, and our fuel, obviously, gas has been an increase, and so we're going to have to adjust there, and then this is the new custodial service contract that we're looking at to take care of our bathrooms and our facilities and our parks with a company, so that's what's going on with parks. In recreation, we have a couple of changes that kind of highlight, we're having more activity for our recreational registration for our programs, and so we're going to have more costs associated with that, and so we have to increase our active net charges and then supplies, we're booming in all our facilities, and so they need to have the proper equipment to do so, and this is also includes the ball washer for the range at the golf course, so that's out there for Chase there, and then administratively, we have a few changes, increase in our insurance, that's a five hundred and ten thousand, legal services, we do have an increase due to the new growth and oversight of our contracts and agreements, and then other professional services is going down from three twenty-five to eighty, and that's because we had a lot of one-time studies this current year with the by-district elections, the optimized plan, the total compensation study, the VOZ potential tax measure and those things, so we're not looking to see as much of that activity next year, and then it's an election year, every other year we have an election cost if there's a runoff, and that's what we anticipate the cost to be, about sixty thousand, overall about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar reduction because of the one-time studies, but those are the changes in the twenties. Next up, we have thirties, and this is our debt service, so these are the leases and the loans that we have, our biggest one is the pool bond, we make an annual payment of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we started this five years ago, so this will be the fifth payment against thirty years' worth of payment, so it matures in 2048, okay, and then next up, we have the Mather Sports Center loan, it's been around for fifteen years, and we have five more years left on that, matures in 2027, and it's a three hundred and ten thousand dollar payment. And then wrap it up, we have some small leases for equipment, our recreation van, our golf carts, our carry-all at the golf course, and a mower at parks, relatively the same as current year, no new debt that we're taking on. For equipment, golf's requesting a greens aerator to take care of the greens, and they're very happy about that, facilities is looking for a trailer for the scissor lift and a Tommy gate lift for the aquatics truck, and then they're also looking for three trucks, Ford F two fifty, a Ford F one fifty for roving crew and detail crews and aquatics, and then also a Toro seventy-two inch mower and a Toro thirty-six inch mower for parks. And the purchase price seemed pretty good, so that's why we're going purchase versus lease on those. And then projects, so Mather Sports Center, that's the theme here, right, and so the infill turfs, we want them to look like this again, and so we're going to make that our priority for all three fields. At Taylor Park, we're potentially looking at a hundred thousand dollar grant, and we can use it as we need with a couple nuances, but we think it could be used for ADA improvements, for an enhancement, and the enclosure of the irrigation, so we're happy about that. And then at Prospect Hill Park in Gold River, the basketball court needs help to be resurfaced, and so we'll tackle that, and then also to get ahead of deferred maintenance at Heron Landing Community Park, we want to resell and restripe the lines at the parking lot. Those are our four main projects, we also have Arista del Sol coming on in the community park, brand new, it's a community park, so we're going to manage it, we're not going to trinket it, it'll be on us to manage, so planning will take care of that, and we'll have pictures for that next time, promise. And then finally, the last piece to balance the budget is the revenue side, the resource side, so I feel like there's going to be a pretty good climb in property taxes, I was pretty close last time, I was only about seventy thousand dollars off of the five million there, so that's not bad, and I was off in the right way, so we'll see if I hit that mark, tax assessments coming in at seven point five, and then recreation's coming in stronger, but again, like Patrick said, this incorporates the fee structure that was passed earlier, and so that's good, we should be able to have this as a good target, good goal for us to reach in our programming and our rentals. Fun fact, the golf course will be self-sufficient and operate with the one point five million budget in revenue and spending, but, you know, we can always adjust, if the golf course needs help, you know, we're not that far away, and so we can do mid-year adjustments if needed, that's a fun fact. And that's my report, again, the reserves, we don't plan on gaining any reserves, unfortunately, I mean, inflation is real, but we're also trying not to use reserves, and this budget does not use reserves outside of any rollover projects that we have that will go into next year, and the balance, or the budget is balanced, and that's my presentation.
Thank you very much.
It's easier the second round.
And a little faster, too. At this time, I would like to invite any member of the public who has any questions or discussion items, and seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing at seven twenty-five PM. And now, if the board has any questions or items they would like to discuss on this presentation, Director Sloan?
No.
Director Danzel?
No, ma'am.
Secretary Yearwood?
I was just wondering, how much, what do the projected revenues from Beach Hut Deli? Any idea, any idea?
How many, how many times are you going to go?
When will they open?
The projected revenue for the district is the rental cost.
That's true, that's true.
Oh, we don't get a percentage?
No.
We'll have more customers coming to eat sandwiches, hopefully they'll play golf.
Absolutely, I know they're coming to.
Well, let's hope it opens.
That's it, no.
They're moving along, if you ever go to the golf course, see Chase to go see the facility, it's amazing.
That was just Secretary Yearwood's version of a joke, Director Sloan.
I appreciate it.
Vice Chair Reyes?
No, I, you know, we've been through this, and I really appreciated our earlier budget workshop to understand, so I think all our questions are answered, thank you.
Chair Lineback? Okay, and I, too, don't have any questions or items to discuss, but I would like to thank you, Matt, and the other people in the district who helped put this budget together.
Absolutely.
It's a great budget, it's a strong budget, and congratulations for all your hard work, thank you.
It's a large shirt.
So, Chair Lineback? So, would somebody like to make a motion?
No one meant to make.
I mean, no, go ahead.
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Twenty-One Slash Twenty-Two Dash Forty-Seven, approving the preliminary budget for the Cordova Recreation and Park District for fiscal year 2022 Slash 2023, and authorize the general manager to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you, Director Danzel.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Director Sloan, roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Chair Lineback?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. We move on to Item H, Board of Directors items.
We have no items for H one, and H two is board member reports and comments.
Okay, so, let's see, I'm scrolling here, so we will start with Director Sloan.
Okay, you can start with me. What was the date? I, actually, Director Danzel and I had a CARPD board meeting on June sixth, it was via Zoom, and basically it was, I think, it's usually the wrap-up of the, that we would have for the conference, we would normally have it on the day after the conference, but maybe I think it was, that was canceled, so we had it via Zoom and went over a lot of the, there was a survey that went out, and only ten people responded, so I kind of find that hard, but I did, I did voice what I heard here at our meeting about certain things, and so I wanted to get on the conference committee, but I was unable to do that, I did land the leadership of the Zoom meeting, so I'm going to do more than one at the end of the year, I'd like to do at least maybe two or three during, maybe four, it'd be kind of nice quarterly to have some type of a Zoom capability. Well, let Director Danzel talk some more of that, also, I attended the Rancher Cordova Athletic Association meeting, missed it for a couple of times, but just wanted to remind you, September tenth is the Rancher Cordova Hall of Fame, that's all, the winners have been picked, and all that's left now is to give out the awards. And also, a reoccurring thing I keep hearing is this cross-country course at Dave Roberts Park, and I believe the Park District and Josh Grover have been talking about that, and there's some talks about, and getting funding from the Measure H, but they're talking about some type of a decomposed granite pathway course through there, and I don't know how far that's come with the district, but it's something that I'd like to find out about.
We're familiar with the topic, it keeps going, rotating around for the last several years.
Right.
So it's something we're definitely aware of, there are some preferences to products in creating a trail system, DG is not a preferred product because it is very hard to maintain, but we will work with them to see if even Dave Roberts is an appropriate space for what their needs are.
Okay, all right, thank you, I think that's, that's all.
And just a brief reminder, since it's a new process, this is also your time for any comments you might have for items not on the agenda, so.
I can't think of anything.
Okay, thank you, Director Danzel.
I just have a few things, one of the events I attended this, this last month is the Senior Information Fair, I'm not qualified to be there, but I talked my mother into going, and it's funny, my mother's birthday is next month, and she's qualified to be there, but it was actually, we went for information for my grandmother, she's ninety-three, and every day she, she looks at us and she's like, you know, maybe it's time to sell the house and just, you know, go to, go live someplace, so we got seven or eight different places that, you know, will accept animals, which, that was her big worry, is she's got her dog, and she didn't want to lose her dog.
So she's not talking about moving to Cabo?
No, she's not talking about, I asked her, but, so it was, it was nice to, you know, get that information, because I think we forget that, you know, or at least I did, I'll be honest, I forgot that, you know, there was that outlet, I might not qualify to go to the senior center for that information for me, that didn't stop me from going and getting it for my mother or my grandmother, in my case, so it was a great event, I saw general manager working out there, staff, I mean, they had food for people registered early, it was a great event, lots of new people signing up for the senior center that day that I was there, so that was nice to see, people that just literally rode their bikes by and were like, what's going on here, oh, wait, I'm a senior, I can, I can actually be here and get meals and things like, so, yeah, it was, it was really nice to see things like that going on, and then I did attend the CARPD board meeting on June seventh with Director Sloan, like you said, it was the end of the year, or end of conference wrap-up, talk about with our new president, getting new committee assignments, I did end up on a new committee, but I, I'll be honest, I didn't remember which one it was this time. It's not one that I was expecting to be on, so I've had finance in one other one, but it is what it is, like Director Sloan said, the turnout for the survey was very low, there is no spot picked for next year's conference, it was discussed, Southern Cal, Central Cal, you know, something like that, try and, try and shake things up, we are very, you know, used, especially here, our smaller districts, we know go to Tahoe, not a problem, but the smaller districts in Southern Cal don't come all the way up here, so maybe it's time that we've got a couple of new ones down there that we show them what's going on, but it just all depends what rate, what hotel rates are, what, you know, dates are out there, I know Director Sloan in the past has had graduation dates and things like that, and his, years of presidency and things like that that he's got to make, and I've always gone, wow, that's, that's tough when you make that decision, well, guess what, I'm in his shoes this, this upcoming year for conference, it's like, okay, do I miss my wife's birthday, or do I miss my daughter's graduation, so, you know, I don't mind missing her birthday, it's not a big deal, she's used to it now, we've been married for, we've been married for twenty-three years. We've been married for twenty-three years, we've missed anniversaries, birthdays, things like that, it's easier to miss that than my kid's graduation, because an anniversary, I'll have another one of those, graduate, high school graduation, I'm not missing that one, or at least I've had twenty-three of them already, Michael, maybe not although that I'll have twenty, I've already had twenty-three of them, so, so I understand that, but other than that, it was, you know, I got an email from Ms. Jones saying, hey, what do I have for my board package, she's like, wait, we just had a meeting, but then because of the conference, that screwed me up a little bit, it was only a three-week turnaround, or it's a four to five week this time, but other than that, everything else has seemed going well, and let's just continue to do the work we're doing.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Secretary Yearwood, do you have anything you would like to comment on or add to what's not there?
Well, I don't, I didn't have any additional events the last couple of weeks since our last board meeting, one comment, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time for it, I'd like for us to, naming parks, I think it's something we need to start looking at, recognizing some longtime board members who are still around while they're still around, looking into considering naming parks after former board members, or, I don't know, people of some stature in the city, I mean, we, it could be existing parks, if that park isn't named for somebody already specifically, or new parks, so I don't know how we start that process, I know we have a process for naming parks.
Yeah.
But I think we need to consider.
There is a policy for naming parks.
Which includes that.
Yeah, so.
So we, I mean, that, if that's.
But it seems like every time we go to name a park, we get a list of birds or trees, and.
If you would like for us to consider that moving forward as an option, so you could have birds, trees, or board members.
Well, I mean, because there's, you want to identify, you don't want to, you know, there needs to be like a list, for lack of a better word, because you don't want.
There's an allowance in the policy for us to, you know, move in that direction if that's what you all would like to do, for sure.
I just think we should identify some people who are worthy of that.
Could we perhaps put this on an agenda to discuss this type of naming of parks?
Something, yeah, I mean, we talked about it.
Because we can't really.
We can't do anything.
We can't, not only can we not do anything tonight, we can't really discuss it either, this is just a time for comments, so if we could perhaps think about putting that on a future agenda, okay, thank you. Vice Chair Reyes?
Yes, I did have, I attended the Sacramento LAFCO, Special Districts LAFCO Commission, and I attended it with Chair Lamba, so we went through a few things, like the bylaws, the review of the bylaws, and they made changes where it was obviously necessary, such as even just meeting dates, didn't seem to coincide on the fifth, fifth Tuesday of the month, of every month, of any month, then we went the rotation of the, of the chair, apparently, and it was, this had to do with the bylaws, and the rotation of the chair, apparently they have two, two representatives, and then they had an alternate, and the alternate, and so there were three of them, and apparently what it is, is they take turns on chairing this special district's advisory committee, so they were trying to see who were the ones in the last years or so, being that Jose is new. So they were trying to see who were the ones in the last years or so, being that Jose is new with his, in his, in his position. And then the other thing that we, he had, this was brought up by their CEO, Jose. He had brought this question up. He said, you know, it was having to do with special districts association. Want, did they, were we interested in amending the nomination process by adopting specific in terms in the nominating resolution? Sounds kind of whatever, but it's like to amend the nomination process. And I think we, it was clear everyone had said no. That was not necessary. Everyone was like, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, we have so much more on our plate to do. Okay? Would you like, that's it, and I'll let Terry finish.
Okay, and yeah, just a couple of things. I, we met the new Cal LAFCO Executive Director, Renee LaRoche. She sat in for the beginning part of our, you know, Sacramento Special District Advisory Committee LAFCO meeting. He also mentioned the, Jose mentioned the Cal LAFCO Conference is October 22nd. And the topics are LAFCO 101, Fire District Consolidations, and Groundwater Authorities. So LAFCO 101 might be interesting, but the others are probably less relevant to, to recreation and park districts and even special districts for that matter. And then just very briefly, they didn't do any ledge updates. They just said if you want them to email Dane Wadley, is that his?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and he will be happy to send you legislative updates. And lastly, a discussion about returning to in-person meetings versus hybrid meetings versus staying with Zoom. And in the short term, the determination was made to stay with Zoom. There were a couple of people who basically said that if it wasn't Zoom, they wouldn't be able to attend due to circumstances in their own, you know, life. And, but they are going to do Zoom at least one more time before they look into changing that. They don't really have an appropriate in the time of COVID meeting space where there can be some social distancing. So that's part of the problem. So anyway, for now, we will continue with Zoom and that was how the meeting ended. And yeah, that's my report as well, and I don't have any additional comments. So we move on to item I, comments by staff on non-agenda items.
Thank you, item I, one is the district-wide monthly progress report for June, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you, Clark Jones. I will be also acting as Jill Nuns this evening, so my voice may change. So to start off, we met with the new salesperson from Visit Rancher Cordova. And we are looking to partner with them to promote and market our CRPD facilities and park attractions and CRPD events. In addition to that, I was asked to sit on an advisory board for Visit Rancher Cordova along with the new Chief of Police. So I'll have my first board meeting coming up on the 24th. So I'm excited to, you know, partner with them and have a strong presence in making sure that we are, you know, promoted and/or considered with a regional approach for increasing our tournaments, maybe at Mather Sports Complex as it relates to out-of-town sports, you know, tournaments and hotels. And, and so their major focus is obviously the hotels and hoteliers and making sure that they're attracting some economic development into the city. So I'm excited about that opportunity and look forward to that. We kicked off our CRPD district-wide optimized plan with our consultants, Gates and Associates. We discussed the logistics and the project outreach strategies. We will be coming forward with a list of dates after the July meeting for you all to be aware of what our strategy is and who we are considering to be stakeholders and the amount or that list of stakeholders that could be influential in helping us develop a great optimized plan for the district. I attended the Senior Information Fair at Nala Orchard Senior Activity Center. It was really nice to just touch base with some of the vendors. And I was really just happy to hear how much they love Heather. And so they were just very complimentary of Heather and the way we run our program out there. They think we're the best in the region and I agree. So speaking of Heather, she also was our pick for Leadership Rancher Cordova this past year. And she had her graduation with Leadership Rancher Cordova. Their project this year was to collect items for the unhoused in the community. And they raised over 1,000 items for that project. And about 500 of those 1,000 were from CRPD staff. So we have an amazing generous staff here and we were happy to support their really great cause. Also, just to follow up on the big day of giving and the month of donations for the foundation. When we wrapped up that cycle of fundraising, it totaled 2125, which is fantastic. But I do want to give a shout out to Brian Danzel, who also helped raise $800 through his birthday donation on Facebook. And that was very generous and thank you for doing that. So we are happy to keep rolling with that. There are tickets that we'll be selling at the foundation, $20 a ticket for you to be the winner of a booze wagon. And so I will share that information with you all at a later time. The announcement of who the winner will be will be at the Party in the Park on July 15th at Hagan, or at Heron Landing Community Park. Overall, the spending is under 18% in comparison to 15% last month, which is awesome coming into the closing of our fiscal year. We had our Capri cycle, I want to say Super Bowl number 23 maybe, I don't know Roman numerals here. But the district visit went with Kirk yesterday, actually. And thank you to the staff that toured Kirk and, you know, hid the, you know, things behind the curtain when he was coming along. So we did a great job. Oh, 18, good, thank you. My brain wasn't working, Roman numerals right there. So we are looking forward to seeing what the results of that audit will be. We have some Sunrise Villas, previously known as Sundance. If you are out towards the area of Rayleigh's and Douglas Road and Sunrise Boulevard, you'll see some construction going on out there. So CRPD staff anticipates presenting to the Board of Directors for approval an annexation into the CRPD, CFD in the near future for that development that's going on. You'll see it behind Rayleigh's, it's kind of like doing an L behind that. And then it shoots off towards Douglas across the street from our center property. So that's kind of exciting to see that going after all of these years of planning and discussing that. Also, this CRPD staff is meeting with the City Development Services team. Meeting regarding a proposal to convert the Doubletree Hotel Suites to permanent housing. And that project is located just east of the Marriott at the Sunrise Boulevard and Folsom Boulevard intersection. So there's a new way of looking at housing. And so it's kind of interesting, it's going to possibly modify the way we do our counts, like dwelling units. So we're, perfect timing. We have an optimized plan that we're going to be working on so that we can work in lockstep with the land authorities to determine these new ways of calculating dwelling units. So these would be considered, I call them micro-units, but it would warrant a different fee associated with that size. So kind of interesting, it's, it's a new way of looking at it. I really respect the entrepreneurial way that the city is looking at these opportunities and more to come. So it's just kind of a, a new introduction to it. We did receive the Prop 68 Infrastructure Revenue Grant, the I R R E grant for 250,000. We get to start the Williamson Project. So we will be right now reaching out to Crest Williams, the owner of that property, actually the person who deeded the property to us. There is a monument sign that we'll be ordering and it is in the family's review per the deed and the agreement. The family was going to be looking at the monument sign and approving the monument sign. We're looking to install the monument sign, late summer, early fall or fall. And from that, we want to do a groundbreaking so that we can celebrate that we're getting the shovel in the ground and doing it. So thank you, Christina, for being tenacious and getting that going. The permitting process is a little longer than we like at this point. So we're being optimistic that fall is a good kind of guesstimate as to when we're going to be putting that shovel in the ground and the monument will be up there. So just the west side. Correct, the west side only is phase one. The east side is going to be a little more expensive. We have to draw water from the west side to the east side, which is an additional expense. And we also need to find a funding source for that. So we should be able to hopefully find someone who will help fund that after we demonstrate getting it done, I think. And so far with demonstrating that, we will be approaching some funders once we've demonstrated that going forward. One side and the other side is still leased. But we're hoping that the family will deed the other side to us once they see the deeded side completed. So we're working with the family on trying to secure the deed for the east side of that property. It will be a part of the PMRID funding because it lands in that particular area. It was not deeded to us with a funding source nor a CFD associated with, you know, increasing the CFD to accommodate that. So it really is a, an opportunity for us to figure out how do we maintain a property that is in essence not supported by CFDs or funding. It is a minimal approach to it, it is a passive park, it is not an active park. So therefore I'm hoping that the maintenance will be low maintenance with, you know, appropriate drought tolerant plantings, you know, minimal pathways, just a kind of a peaceful place for people to go that is aesthetically nicer than what it currently looks like.
Like Salmon Falls, that type of?
Maybe that's a little too much, this one will be a little bit more organic.
Well, I know we, we had that workshop where the people came.
Yes, we are going off of that design and schemes, yeah. That's, the intention is going with what the public decided is what they would like to see in that property. And we will honor that and, and design and build towards that design. So more to come on that, I'm just excited to get that going after all these years. We, now I'm Jill, so. Okay. So in the youth and teen programs and sports, we're excited to announce that we have 30 players signed up for our brand-new youth volleyball league. Teams will practice twice weekly and one game a week for a total of six weeks. Also, in adults, we have 64 teams signed up for the Summer Adult Softball League. With this continued interest in adult softball leagues, we are excited that our leagues are getting back to pre-pandemic numbers. We are using all three of our synthetic turf softball fields four nights a week this season to accommodate for the growing number of teams that are participating. We also.
Patrick, could I take you to the golf? Or were you going to get to that or you weren't going to especially comment on it?
Yeah, I wasn't going to comment, but if there's something that you would like for me to.
I just had a quick question. I mean, I thought the demo days for the golf clubs was a great idea, I was quite impressed. Did we get anything, did, did we get any of the, did we share in sales of the golf sets?
So we placed several orders for custom clubs.
Hold, hold up, wait, can we, because we're recording. Chase, could you come up to the mic and we can talk that way?
Good evening, Chair Lamba, members of the board. So we did, we sold several sets of Torridge Custom Clubs as well as Mizuno Custom Clubs. We offered a small discount for people who showed up for the demo day. And we also sold quite a bit of merchandise that we had in store. So it was a very big success and fortunately for, for us, Mizuno and Torridge want to plan another demo day this fall.
Fantastic.
Yeah, that was a great idea, yeah.
It's, it's a pretty popular thing to do. Most courses have vendors that they, you know, are involved with throughout the year come out. And so we want to plan a lot more.
Great, great.
Thank you.
That was a good impression of Jill, wasn't it? Thank you, Chase. Also, we, I mentioned the Leadership Rancher Cordova. We did a parking lot project at the Mather Sports Complex. We resealed and resurfaced the asphalt and redrew the lines. And for our Board of Directors Special Event Invitation Page, we have a Taco Salad and Bingo fundraiser at the senior center. And that is Monday, June 20th at 11:00 a.m. And then also we have our Cordette, Cordova Cordettes Aqua Show that I know a lot of the board members have attended in the past. That is going to be at the Cordova Community Pool Saturday, July 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then Party in the Park, of course, which will be Friday, July 15th at Heron Landing Community Park. The idea for it being at Heron Landing instead of Village, Village, not Village Green, Lincoln Village Park, thank you, is that we're looking to rotate that particular party in the park to different areas of the district going forward. We're going to see how it goes this year. And then we will do a staff recap and look to probably suggest a new park for the next season. And that concludes my report.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Camp Cordova, there wasn't like any mention of that in, in the report, I noticed. Is that happening, right?
Yeah, all of our summer camps have kicked off as well as our swim lessons, our aquatics programs. It's actually in the board packet.
I scrolled around looking for it.
Yeah, it's. I believe so.
I, man, I read through this thing like three times last night looking for it.
Hold on, let's see. Maybe it isn't mentioned. It, it was just a general mention of our.
Are the numbers good?
Yeah, I believe the numbers are as good as they've been. We're fully staffed and so we do have a new recreation coordinator who's actually infusing some different types of activities this summer. So, so far, so good, we are off to a good start. I mean, we had a little bumpy time at the beginning with the COVID cases. But once we got through that, we should have a decent, robust summer of programming, so, yeah.
It's like anything, next year will be better than this last.
Yeah, exactly. Once every, once COVID really, COVID is still lingering, honestly. And so I think, you know, there is going to be a build. Some programs like sports are building faster than others. But we are fine with our summer camp programs and our aquatics, for sure.
I wanted to ask about, you know how we've, the White Rock Clubhouse?
Yeah.
How that head window vandalism and all this. I wanted, I see now that we've got it replaced and all this, which is great. Do we have cameras there outside that would be able to, or did we find out who the vandals were or did the police catch?
We do have cameras. And there were, I believe, rocks that were thrown at the window is what was found out. And the windows have been replaced. We've had significant problems at White Rock Park with unhoused folks camping overnight in that area. The time that this had happened, that was when we were at the peak of that issue. That issue has since been resolved. And so from my understanding, we have eliminated that problem as of now. It's not great, but it is not as bad as it was, say, two months ago.
And maybe with your relationship or your new relationship with the, with the chief of Rancher PD, there could be some.
So we actually met with the hot team, Jill and I, and discussed our, you know, concerns and our strategies going forward, particularly about White Rock Park. And we came up with some strategies that we're kind of ping-ponging around with our lawyer as it relates to what we can possibly do in our security and then have them supplement through PD. There are some challenges with taking on those kind of responsibilities in terms of liability and, and risk for the district that we're still considering. And then also on top of that, Jill and I met with the new Chief of Police and the Assistant Chief of Police. And we discussed those concerns overall. And so yes, it's about building a relationship and making sure that when we do have problems and considerable problems, that they're addressed and we have a better understanding of what they can do and maybe what we can do to make sure that this gets alleviated. Their hands are tied in a lot of ways. And, you know, and ours are in ways that we may not want to enter into a service that is unsustainable and. that is unsustainable and possibly costing us additional money and possible risk and liability.
Do they have an organized neighborhood watch in that community?
Not, not particular community, they have a group of neighbors, I believe Loriann Alms works with in that particular neighborhood. We have engaged with several neighbors in there. Just about two years ago, pre-COVID, we had that issue out there, and we had that community meeting. And so those folks have not re-approached us this time. And it was about a two-week major issue, and then it resolved. Before, it was a month, maybe two months, and then the resolve came. So we're on top of it faster, and we are trying to resolve it quicker so that we don't have it blossom into something that is completely uncontrollable.
Yeah, because it's a very nice splash park. I mean, a lot of people look at that and, and, and the whole setting. But unfortunately, they get worried and about the, the, the neighborhood and the setting and being there. And so, you know, maybe in some sense or other with a little bit more of, I said, security cameras or something, and obviously, maybe a neighborhood watch that can be organized.
You know, the PD has focused on that particular neighborhood to try to bring some more. I mean, they've had graffiti issues, they've had a lot of just general issues. There is a overpass from the other side over the freeway that is possibly a, you know, a gateway.
Yeah.
And an ability to kind of hide. And so we're just doing the best we can, but we also have to, you know, balance our, you know, responsibilities and our services and rely on security in order to do their job. And as I said, their hands may be tied in some situations legally and/or, you know, risk management-wise. But, you know, it, it is also causing some other issues, like Matt had mentioned in the budget. Our strategies may be leading to breakage of our irrigation systems.
Yeah.
Or needing to replace them because they're damaged. So, I mean, there's, there's consequences to us just alone with that situation. But the real piece is the security and the safety of the people that are in the neighborhood as well as in our park. So, yeah, it's a big, it's a huge challenge.
Isn't there a school right across the street from there and all that?
There is. It's a huge challenge, and it will be a huge challenge going forward. I mean, there's this case Boise, the Boise case that they always refer back to in terms of what you're able to do as a security agency related to working with folks that are unhoused. And there's a lot of, you know, precedent set from that. And so there's a lot of caution in how you go about approaching and dealing and what's appropriate to, you know, and legal to work with those that are, you know, unhoused. So, so it's a sensitive issue, for sure. But we're, we're on it with them, we have great relationships. We have a great, Scott Norton is our representative, he meets with them, I believe, weekly. And so we have a great relationship with them, and it's going to get even stronger, I think, as we kind of build that relationship back up since we had a, kind of an interim police chief for a while, for about a year during COVID. But we had a good relationship with the previous one, and so I'm looking forward to, you know, getting a very strong relationship with the new police chief and the assistant police chief. So they're great guys, and I'm excited to work with them. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Party of the homeless, they actually have appointed a mayor of that area.
Yeah, there's, when we were talking with the hot team, they were describing kind of like the sociology or the, you know, the way that these groups are going. It almost seems like they're assigning a leader for this group that kind of travels together, probably for safety reasons and whatnot. But once the leader is identified and or removed from the situation, typically, the people that are along for the ride dissipate and go other places. At least in this case, that was what they observed. But it seems to be something that they're finding as a phenomena related to these packs of folks traveling together and moving from place to place. So it's a real education on what we're doing. But we want to be sensitive, and we want to be, you know, doing what we're doing. Our staff do a phenomenal job with approaching people with, you know, empathy and concern and care. And we have certain resources we can refer them to, and there's some things that we don't, as a community, have. And so without those, you know, there's not much we can do. So really, in essence, if there's not a bed for them to be transferred to, then there's no way that we could remove them from a public space, is really what the nuts and bolts are about it.
I think one of the things also they had for security or to be able to manage elements that shouldn't be there was a lighting situation. You know, the more lights there are that can show people where people are, not have dark corners.
Yeah, there, there's.
Because that's, you're right about that overpass.
Yeah, there's strategies when it gets to a critical point, like we did at White Rock that last time. They had those mobile light units come out and just blast the light out onto that area as a deterrent, and, and it worked.
Yeah.
There's other strategy, I mean, we're all trying to figure out best ways to help these folks out. I mean, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, General Manager Larkin. Now we move on to item J, informational items.
Thank you, J1 is the Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. We had two articles and public hearing notices. And correspondence regarding the board elections has been submitted to the county. I included a minutes copy from PMRID, and then we have our newsletter from the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center. Then item J2 is your calendar.
Hey, thank you very much. Well, we have come to the end of our agenda. So I am going to adjourn this meeting to the next regular board meeting of this Park District Board on Wednesday, July 20th, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. And the time now is 8:05 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.